Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Cassoun?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
John Francois?
Here.
Sid?
Here.
Whit?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
Tonight we have the minutes from the common council meeting April 4th, 2017.
Mr. Responsible, Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Burr, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Tonight we have correspondents for a new liquor license at 52 Cottage Street.
Order the police and Richard?
We have a letter from the Ag and Marketing for our municipal shelter inspection report from Port Jervis.
Received and filed.
We have a letter from the 2017 Stewart Military Appreciation Day Picnic Committee, and it's, we loaned them their portable stage to, for this event in the past, and they want to thank you to our Marine and Air Force personnel for their families stationed at Stewart Airport.
Received and filed.
We also have a letter from the Hudson Valley Honor Flight, and the, they're from the America the Beautiful Concert Committee, who also borrows our Middletown portable stage, and it's going to be happening on August 12th, 2017, from 12 noon to 8:00 PM.
Received and filed.
That is all of correspondence.
For the good of the city, we have a presentation for the Eagle Scout project.
I'd like to ask Joseph Graziosi to come on up. Joseph, if you look at the TV screens, you'll see the improvements that were made to the Middletown, City Middletown Dog Park. This was all part of a project by Joseph here, it was his Eagle Scout project, so on behalf of the city of Middletown, we wanted to recognize his hard work and his commitment that he made to this project. John Bianchi and Chris Brinkerhoff said it is absolutely beautiful, the dogs are enjoying it, and we really appreciate, on behalf of the common council and our residents, I want to say thank you for your hard work and commitment that you made. So this proclamation reads, it's a certificate of recognition for Eagle Scout Joseph Graziosi, awarded the certificate for his Eagle Scout project with the Recreation Department. He made the plans, he received donations, and built the elements for the dog park for the dogs to play on within the park, and it's a combination of bridges and tunnels. So he was representing the city of Middletown with courage and pride, it's dated today and signed by myself, and on behalf of the common council, I want to say congratulations and thank you for a job well done.
Well, I have to say it has been a long road for me, and I'm sorry to see it come to an end so abruptly, but scouting has taught me so much in my life, and I would not be the person today that I am without it. I would also, I would like to thank mainly my parents, because I am so proud to be their son, they are both extremely hardworking, and they worked their whole lives to try to give me the life that they think I should have. I would also like to thank my scoutmaster, Jim Fedina, he was a main driving force in me making Eagle, you know, I wavered sometimes whether or not I would actually make it, but he was a real kick in the butt for this. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Yes, good evening, tonight we have with us three representative of Census meters, they are from HD Supplies, which is the authorized seller and representative of Census meters. As you know, we are doing a project in the city of Middletown where we are replacing the water meters throughout the city, so we will have access to the signal, and we spoke about all the advantages of having this system, and they are here to do a short presentation for you and the public, and to see if there's any questions about any of the, any of the components of the project. With that, I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, we appreciate your time, I'm Lee Conwell with HD Supply Water Works, we are the, as Jacob said, the distributor for census metering, Census is the manufacturer, and Mike Johnson is here with me, and Rob Bruce in the back of the room. Census was asked to come and do a brief presentation, and they are actually at a sales meeting, all of them are out of state today, or this week, so we got volunteered to come in, but we appreciate the time to be here. Just briefly, we'll talk a little bit about the safety and the radio transmission of the water meters, and to begin with, just a little bit of a quick explanation, each residence or business will have an individual water meter, typically in the basement, sometimes outside in a meter pit underground, but that meter will have a wire going from the water meter to an outside radio device. The water meter, it just accumulates registration, as the meter goes through it, it basically counts the water coming through. The radio transmitter is not transmitting it all the time, once an hour, that transmitter will read the water meter through the hardwire, that's not a radio signal, that's a hardwire, and then four times, or six times a day, that radio will transmit that reading, along with some other information, mainly the ID number of the water meter to a tower-based system that will receive those readings, and then those are hosted over the internet by Census. So any, all the people that work here at the city water department will have access to that, it's a web-based access. The system is a very safe system, as far as radio waves go, we put in a lot of these systems, Census has all across the country and also in Europe, and it's a very safe system. As I said, it transmits six times a day, that radio transmit, when it happens, is about a quarter of a second, so it's, it's just, you know, as click as a snap of your fingers, and it's a very low power, it's .08 units of RF energy. I'm not an RF engineer, but we've got a lot of comparison that will show you to kind of gauge that, that amount of energy. Quick comparison is, everybody has a cellphone or a smartphone, and when you talk about a smartphone, it's about 1,084 units of energy for a five-minute call, holding it up against your, within an inch of your body. So you can see, we're looking at .48 units of energy four times a day versus that, or a microwave oven, which in a quarter of a second produces 250 units of energy, so it's really a minute amount of RF energy that is produced. This slide just shows some other sources of energy, radio-wise, TV or a radio broadcast signal, .005, and this is, they measure this in micro watts per square centimeter. Smart meter, which is the radio transmitter, not the meter itself, just the transmitter is .1. If you're in a McDonald's or Starbucks or anyplace with Wi-Fi, you're looking at about 10 to 20 units of energy, the same from a laptop computer, cellphone, anywhere from 30 to 10,000, depending on the model of the phone. Walkie-talkie is very high, up to 42,000 units, and a microwave oven is 5,000 units, if you're just a couple inches away, which is awfully close. But generally, you know, these systems have been out there in radio frequency for water meter readings since the early 1980s they first came about, and there's been lots of studies, 20,000 studies of the radio frequency as it pertains to the smart meter systems. Most of them really don't show any conclusive evidence of harm, you know, unless it's a constant, constant exposure, like anything else, a little bit of it, you know, if you're in a, if you're exposed to the Wi-Fi signal, a little bit is not going to hurt you, but if you were bombarded by it day after day after day, it might cause some side effects. So basically, when you're talking about smart metering, your cellphone and other everyday devices that you're around transmit, put out a lot more power than the smart meter does. We've got some links to some studies here, and these are third-party studies, we can give those to Jacob if you want to put them on the website of the city or something, but the top one there is the World Health Organization, so these are organizations that are deeply concerned about health and well-being. The second one is the National Center, I can't remember what that one is, oh, National Institute of Health is the second?
Institute of Health.
Yep. The third one is the California Council on Science and Technology. That is basically several California universities that have banded together to study the health effects of different things, they've been into the radio frequency and other different things. The one is FCC, there's some good information on the FCC website, because they actually govern all the licensing on the smart meter systems. And the last one there is census.com, but they have links from their website to other third-party websites that have done studies. So, didn't want to take a lot of time tonight, but we wanted to speak briefly about this and see if there were questions, so at this point, if you have questions, we certainly entertain them.
Question, the meters read to a tower?
Yes, there's, there's two water tanks in town, they have an antenna mounted on the top of the tank, and that six times a day signal comes out from the radio transmitter, it's received at the tower, and there's some computer and radio equipment there in a cabinet.
My next question, how many towers?
Yeah, we've got two towers in Middletown.
Anyone else on the council? Alderman Massey?
I'm scheduled that you're going to be at my house tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock.
All right.
I'll be there while I be late for work.
Lock up.
Fortunately, we don't have control over the install company in this instance, but the installers are very good.
Good. Anyone else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
I could quickly ask a question, just for the purpose of this being in a meeting, how long is the install approximately?
Half an hour.
Half hour?
Yep.
Okay. Just so it's public knowledge.
There are some complications when we get involved.
Okay.
Yeah, each instance is.
The only question I had was actually about the frequency, which was a question that was brought to me, and that, having the examples and comparisons is great, so thank you for doing that.
You're welcome, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, for the good of the city, any member from the public would like to come and address the council and step forward?
Yes, my name's Harold Thomas, I live at 122 Sprague Avenue, I know the engineers and they're all been checking out behind my yard and everything, there's one question I want to ask, are we going to keep our homes? That's what I want to ask. The question, that we're going to keep our homes there, after they decide what they're going to do.
Well, we don't know what the.
Yeah, well, the question I want to know is, are we going to keep our homes, that's the problem line.
Well, well.
The quickest answer is, we're going to keep it or not, that's, that's the answer.
Well, actually, I thought you were one of the people that asked us to take your home, but the, we submitted all the requests that we had from the Sprague Avenue area that's in a flood zone, to the federal government, and through the, through the budget, not the budget process, the grant process, and they'll make the final evaluation, I think it's through, Jacob, this is New York, right?
New York Rising.
This is, New York Rising, Lori DuBois, and all of the requests have gone into them, and their engineers will make a, an evaluation at some point, and then if they need any property taking, because I believe you did collect money under FEMA, correct?
No, I didn't.
You didn't, but some of the properties that did, what they tried to do in some cases is they tried to buy the properties out, rather than have them be repeat problems under FEMA claims. So it depends on where the house is, depends on, I think, there are a lot of factors, but that decision's not really made by us, that decision will be made in conjunction with the professionals on the state level. So to answer your final question is, we don't know at this point.
Well, the final question, I'm going to be, the rest of the residents, you're going to have your hands full, no one's going to give up their homes, that's not.
Well, it's.
Because everybody's got mortgages there, and we just cannot just walk away and have it open in the backyard.
I'm not in a position to give you that answer, but I do know that.
You have to give us the answer.
But Mr. Thomas, you came in personally and saw me at the beginning of the process, and you asked that the city submit a part of the proposal to purchase your home.
No, I did not say.
Yes, you did, you absolutely did.
I didn't.
You absolutely did, so you absolutely did, and we, what we did was we submitted.
I have a copy of it, my house.
Okay, I'm telling what you said to me, but, but that decision's not made by us locally.
I didn't say it to you either.
That decision is made by others, not us, and then as soon as the final plan is presented, it'll be presented, I think, to the common council and to the state of New York, so, but it's, has to do with FEMA and FEMA monies and.
This is where we all stand in, right?
Well, we don't know where you stand yet, I don't know how to answer your question.
It's answer the question, would it be your home, would you like to have them take your home away from you, you own a mortgage on it, you guys can afford to get another home, we can't.
We, go ahead, Jacob, and then this is it.
If I may, just honestly, it's, it's a heartbreak, that area. Every time, even, even not a major storm like Irene and Lee, even less intense storm does cause inadequate, I mean, tons of flooding in there, in that whole area, their backyards, and we just look in there and we feel so sorry for them, that they have to suffer and go through it time after time. Like the mayor said, there is no decisions made yet, all the engineers are doing in their backyards is collect measurements to find out where the bottleneck is, to evaluate the existing culvert, the carrying capacity, but the fact is, when they have even a minor, sometimes not just, not a very intense storm, even medium storm, does cause flooding in there, frequent flooding, and it's a heartbreak, that situation, because it's in a flood zone.
From Pima, it's the only flood we had there, and the second one came right behind, that was the only flood we had.
All right, thank you for coming to the council and addressing, that's all we need. We addressed it, your concerns.
We need the city, I already made it.
Anyone else that would like to address the council, please come forward, you have four minutes, address the council.
Good evening, if you pardon me, I'm going to reference some notes here, because there's quite a bit that I want to say, but I'm not going to take too much of your time. I wanted to start by saying how much I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you like this, it's at the very foundation of our democratic process, as a citizen, to be able to come here and speak to you all like this, so I commend you for having open mind. My name is Scott Martens, I'm born and raised in the city of Middletown, and I loved every minute of it. I came back here, and I now live in the city, in the town of Minnesick, but I do a lot of business here, I'm a carpenter of my own small business, so I'm here a lot, it's a very vested interest for me, to keep this city safe, for the citizens, and for the children especially. I'm here today to talk to you about the CPV power plant that's currently under construction in the town of Wayweyanda, but it's right on the city line, we all know where it is. It's of a huge concern to every person in this county, particularly Middletown, the city of Middletown. All the emissions, the 4 million plus of CO2, plus other particulate matter, methane, formaldehyde, it will all sit directly over the city of Middletown, we live in a valley, it's just going to sit here. We don't live in, on the top of, it's not going to be on the top of a mountain, it's not in the plains where it can kind of just disperse, it's all going to sit here, in this valley. This valley that has a heritage of agriculture, and we need to preserve that, and make sure that we can continue that heritage into the future, for all the farmers that are still there, but also for tourism. You spoke about it before, you know, it's in your interest, economic interest, to make sure that people want to come here. We've got all this new building out on that side of town, who's going to want to move there, with a power plant with two 275-foot stacks, spewing carbon dioxide constantly, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. I'm also here because this is, this is not political, this is not economic, this is a public health and safety issue, nothing more and nothing less. This is about the children, this is about our families, we have to defend their health and their right to grow up in an environment that is safe. Thanks to the Wayweyanda Six trial, new information was presented by doctors, three doctors, who were at the leading, who were at the forefront of the study of fracked gas, which is, this is, this is kind of new, okay? Excuse me. Doctors Ingraffia, Doctors Howard, and Dr. Derska, they all testified about the amazing health and environmental impacts that we're going to see because of this place, not speculatively, they, this will happen here. If you want to get some of this information yourself, it's all available for you, there's a website dedicated to it, it's easy to remember, it's protectorangecounty.org, you can go there, click on CPV fact sheet, Alderman Massey has it right there, you can check his out if you want, it's all right there, read it for yourself, open Pandora's box, and then decide for yourself, is this right for your constituents? Is this right for the children who are going to grow up in pilgrim states? It's not, we all know this. In a time when even our governor has banned fracking due to health reasons, we're going to allow this massive power plant to be built? Taking fracked gas from other states, pumping it here? Polluting their air, their water, their environment, sacrificing them in Pennsylvania, Ohio, West Virginia? Pumping it here? And then polluting our air, and our water, and our environment? For a power plant that is not even necessary? This was all part of, part of the information that came out with the Wayweyanda Six, this is on the record, this is science, and we can do something about it.
You need to wrap it up.
I will, thank you, excuse me, there's a lot here, and it's, and this is the biggest, one of the biggest things that's happened to Orange County, and specifically the city of Middletown. So please, I urge all of you to get the information, stand up for your constituents, the children. I propose that we come together, and that we adequately inform people and educate them, let them decide, once they have the information in hand, let them decide if they want this to happen, and we all know that what their answer is going to be. So you all, as the, as the leaders of our community, the elected leaders, who are, it's in your, the biggest duty that you have is to protect our health and our public safety. It's you guys who need to join the fight and help lead the movement to stop this place, it's been done before, it's not done yet, it's not a done deal. There was a power plant that was built on Long Island, that got built to almost fruition, and enough people got together, they stopped it, and they got Governor Cuomo, the first Governor Cuomo, to sign a law, and it was shut down immediately, and it still sits there to this day. So it's your guys' choice whether we're going to lead middle, the city of Middletown to a bright future, or we're going to just go back to the old dirty ways, like a plant like CPV is going to produce. Thank you all very much for your time, I'll be here, if you want to speak more, I'd love to speak to each one of you about this further, and brainstorm some ideas of how we can get that information out to your constituents and allow them to decide whether or not this is good for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
I don't want to be pessimistic, but with the EPA being deregulated, I really am afraid, but right now I can't talk about that, I already have a speech. Please, I'm asking all lawmakers to make Middletown a sanctuary city. While it's good that our mayor has taken certain steps to assuring our people that everything is okay, he isn't a lawmaker. Fiat justicia, ruat calum. Let justice be done though the heavens fall. At the end of the day, police officers and judges will implement what the law says, but it is also for this reason that we must be a sanctuary, because children shouldn't fear that their mothers was deported while they were at school, nor should mothers fear that their child will become fatherless. Unfortunately, being an illegal human being is a crime, and that results in people not reporting crime in Middletown because they fear ICE will be listening in. In my case, something happened to my car while I was attending a council meeting months ago, I didn't inform the police about my flat tire because I had a little marijuana in my car, and that should not have prevented me from calling the police, but I'll have the potential to incriminate myself because it is a federal crime. It's unfortunate, but bad laws affect people of all backgrounds, this is why I'm against a new courthouse, not only because we were taxed twice for it, but because it doesn't address the underlying issue, bad laws. It's why we have the highest incarceration rates per capita in the world, when one out of five people in Middletown are living in poverty, a fine from a bad law only leads to a downward spiral. If a father has to choose between paying a fine or feeding their children, I know what I would choose. The money the city receives from fines and forfeits yearly has increased 36% since 2010, yet according to the latest census data, population in Middletown has decreased 1%. That means the average resident is paying the city 36% more on fines since 2010, yet our property taxes keep going up due to wasteful spending, some of which are already expressed. Laws are supposed to help a society, yet our police get blamed for doing their job. Sorry, it's not a job, it's a duty, it's a duty to enforce the laws, even if they're constitutional, but even if they personally don't agree with it, they have to enforce the law. If our lawmakers weren't concerned with giving themselves pay raises and giving out tax breaks to corporations like Candy, then we would issue community service and other non-financial penalties as alternatives towards assuring compliance with the law. I just don't want the police or judges having their hands tied when it comes to giving them options that may better all of us. I think this is my last meeting unless I have some mercy from the council and the people. It became clear that my well-being is at risk. First, the council has said that they might get to a point where they would shut down public broadcasting on Channel 20 because my speech is too political, though I think both parties are horrible. The second time, when the council president threatened to kick me out because my speech is too political, I won't, it would be within his means to do it, but that doesn't make it right, but this last time, that got me the most. You could question my facts, even though I have sources, two sources for everything I spew, but please, don't, don't intimidate me with the police. That same night, police called me twice at night, one at 9:59 PM and another at 10:30 PM. It was to not contact a member of the council because privately I asked to smoke, but publicly, days after, the council members said that they would like to sit down and talk with me. I guess it is possible within 45 minutes for a member to do complete 360, but since the ACLU has contacted me recently, I'm not going to come in unless I can have more assurances about my well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
Good evening, my name's Sparrow Tobin, 29 Washington Street, the 4th Ward. Good evening, members of the common council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. I was pleased to hear at the last common council meeting that the city is looking into putting sidewalks on Dulson Avenue, I think that's a great idea, I would love to see sidewalks all the way up Dulson Avenue if possible, especially with the new development on County Route 78. I know the history of Middletown, that Dulson Avenue was originally the outskirts of town, but now with all the development and the condos and apartments and houses that are being built up there, we have a lot of people walking down to the grocery store or to work on those, I think it was called goat paths, on Dulson Avenue, and when they're doing that, they're putting themselves at risk, they're putting themselves at jeopardy. I think it'd be really cool if we could pursue some grant funding for projects like this, through, like the town of Walkeville did on the outskirts of town, on the other side, I'm not saying increase taxes, unless taxpayers have it, it's been stretched enough, but I'd love to see if we could see, find some grant money. Sidewalks on Dulson Avenue, I believe, are a safety issue, we need them there, I don't know how many times I've driven up and down Dulson Avenue, and I've seen people walking on those goat paths, I've seen kids riding bikes on the side of the road, I've seen people with carts, either collecting bottles or getting their groceries on the side of the Dulson Avenue, I've even seen people in electric wheelchairs riding down the road, and so that, that must make them scared to be a pedestrian walking on the busy side of a four-lane highway or artery into the city, and it makes me nervous as a motorist driving there, especially near McDonald's where their people are inching out, so I think this is some area where we can really help the residents of the 4th Ward. Anything we can do to make the streets safer for our kids, I think, is a great. Anything we can do to make the streets safer for our kids, I think is a great idea. Especially in the light of the tragedy that just took place on Route 7, Route 17 there, where the teenager was struck by a pickup truck. Kids are impulsive and my, my heart goes out to their parents. They make rash decisions. I know I have two of them and I also teach middle school every day, so I live it. I know about impulsive students. And so we don't want them walking in the street. I, I was at ShopRite the other day and there was this, a young guy who's checking me out. He's talking about how he couldn't get a ride home, his, his parents couldn't pick him up, so he was going to walk home up near Orange County Community College. And that he wasn't getting off of work till 10 o'clock at night. I know as a father too, I wouldn't want my son crossing the street at 10 o'clock at night. So I think if we could get sidewalks there, that'd be, would be very, would help us. I also want to commend the mayor for a suggestion a few meetings ago about toughening up the snow removal code. We really need to make sure the sidewalks are clear from corner to corner. Otherwise, our kids are walking in the street. They're walking to the bus stops in the morning in the dark and that's, that's dangerous. I hope the county council takes up the mayor's suggestions. I think these are two great ideas, the sidewalks and getting tougher on the snow removal code that can really make our streets safer. On a completely other note, I'm a vice president of Lions Club and it was great to see Alderman Massey, Alderman Kleiner and all the women ran Cassoun to Pancake Breakfast. It was definitely noted and very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, remarks of department heads.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to update you on the Community Development Agency. We're officially in contract with the House on Cottage Street and moving towards closing and moving towards the second house on Amherst to be in contract. So things are progressing nicely. Also on the economic development, community development front, we're working on some small business loans and more rehab projects. This Thursday, the Tea Garden on North Street, 59 North Street is having their grand opening. Everyone's welcome to go and that's at 1 PM. Also, all our summer season events begin on May 25th with the outdoor concerts and movie series and so forth. And we also have this coming Saturday, come see some great talent. Orange Regional Medical Center and the city are hosting ORMC Got Talent. And it's this Saturday, May 20th. And it's to benefit the American Heart Association, correct President Rodriguez? And also on the big screen, we'll be showing the classic Wizard of Oz on May 27th. So as you can see, there's a lot going on and we're looking forward to a great summer. And that's all I have for this evening.
Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Good evening again. I'm going to be very brief tonight. You had the census meeting, a presentation rather, about the radio signal there. And also just a reminder that we are still doing the flushing of the water distribution system. And tomorrow, we're going to be starting on the first ward, which is going to be the end of, hopefully we're going to be ending it in two weeks. Spring cleanup or bulk pickup is still going on. We started the fourth ward on Monday and hopefully will be done Thursday. And then that will be a great relief for us. After that, we start focusing on the potholes and all the other issues and repaving the roads and, which is tentatively scheduled to start in, after the 4th of July. Usually we start July 5th with milling. Shortly after that, we start the paving. The Route 211 project is, is moving along. It's taking a long time because, longer time because they had to do the demolition by hand of the old bridge because it's right next to our, right, right next to our 24-inch row, finished water line that supplies the city with water. And it's also right under it is the 20-inch high-pressure water main that supplies the remainder of the city with water. So we're very careful in there. We have our guys monitoring the project 24 hours, 24 hours a day or as long as there is work. The contractor is almost trying to work around the clock. They were delayed because of the amount of rain that they had. And they had to do a tremendous amount of pumping of the Monhegan Brook to deal with the situation so they will not get flooded. But it's still, that 211 is going to remain closed for about couple of, two more weeks. With that, I will stop. If you have any questions for me?
Jacob? Alderman Kleiner?
Just one comment, one more time. Commissioner down by the Van Duser House, the Historical Society Building, looking around that neighborhood, just are TVs everywhere.
Yeah.
So if, once again, we could get that message out and, and hopefully, I was looking at July 8th or 15th or 22nd, maybe one of those Saturdays, we could schedule an electronics drop-off day so that, there, there obviously still are lots of TVs around that people need to get rid of.
We're completely in support of it. So once you guys pass it, you and the mayor, the county council and the mayor pass that resolution, we'll act on it, you know, we'll be, hopefully it's going to be done before our paving project starts.
Okay, very good.
Which is after the 4th of July.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? John Friswah?
As far as a sidewalk on Dulson, how much the grant would it be to start the project?
We, we actually got a grant for that project in an amount of $2.16 million. And the city have to come up with 20% local contribution, which will bring the project to about $2.6 million, the total amount of, which is a huge, huge amount of funding.
And that's only doing sidewalk on one side on Dulson?
Yes, yes. We're going to try to make it stretch as much as possible. That grant will include Wickham Avenue, as you know, in your committee, in your DPW committee. You have Wickham Avenue, you have Grove Street, you have, and the mayor will be talking about all these grants. We have much more money, much more projects coming up in there and with multi-millions of dollars. Some of it will include sidewalks and traffic lights and so on.
Thank you. What else? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like you to keep Chief Butch Amthor, the chief of Maybrook, in your hearts and prayers. He was shot today while performing his duty in reference to a domestic dispute. It appears that he's in stable condition, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows that and keeps his family in their hearts and prayers. I just have a few issues to update you on. One of the comments that one of the, one of the, Mr. Fernandez addressed to the council on live TV was insinuating that the police department may have done something improper in reference to our contacting of him. That was a legitimate complaint that we acted on. And if we receive a legitimate complaint, we'll contact him again. As of now, that issue is a non-issue. But I don't want the public believing that the police department is doing something Moving on from that, in your packets this evening or in your mailboxes, you should have received the schedule for the Safe Summer Initiative. For those of you who weren't on the council the last time we did the Safe Summer Initiative, it was a collaboration between the council, county council president, mayor, police department, and all the department heads of the city. Where basically our objective is to bring city government into each ward of the city to address concerns. So I've sent out invitations to all the department heads. I've received some responses back, but I think it's a great initiative where we can all go into the neighborhoods from 6 to 8 at some scheduled times during June and address face-to-face the constituents in the neighborhood and any concerns that they may have. The second component of the Safe Summer Initiative is that the police department, with assistance from the sheriff's department, with assistance from the New York State Police, New York State parole, and a host of other law enforcement agencies, seek to have an impact on crime in the city of Middletown. So there's an invitation to all of those agencies to come in and participate with us. And the hopes is, is that we can have a impact on crime that may occur during the summer by enforcing heavily during those times, things that might rear their head as we move forward. The Junior Police Academy has three sessions this year, two in July, one in August. And I'd like to thank Superintendent Brinkerhoff for helping us with this police academy. Her and her staff have been very helpful in making sure that this is a successful program. And from what I'm told as of this time, it's all booked up. We also have in conjunction with the Recreation Department, a Cops and Kids Field Day, which is scheduled for July 15th, where we'll be spending some time with the Recreation Department and our youth of the city. That is all I have for this evening, unless you have any questions for me.
President of the Police Chief, Alderman Kleiner?
Chief, on the Safe Summer Initiative where you have, say, the second wards meeting Wednesday, June 28th at the Elks Club. And then under that, it says June 30th and July 1st, and it mentions the sheriff and the New York State Police.
Those are the enforcement dates.
That's, that's the enforcement follow-up, so that's not a meeting or anything.
No, no, no. Those, those are the enforcement dates for the law enforcement agencies. But as a side, I haven't released the schedule to the public yet, per se, because if there's anything that you believe should be added to that, we're open. The mayor had some concerns about some different locations that maybe he wanted to address. And if you have the same concerns, please let me know and we'll try to work those into what we're doing.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, folks. Just a couple of quick things tonight. One, thank you to our Eagle Scout. It is great to see our kids getting involved in our community. We have another Eagle Scout has contacted us to complete a walking trail at Maple Hill too. So Maple Hill Park is going to be a beautiful facility within a year, I'm sure. I was also able last week, or two weeks ago, to attend the STEM Night at Middletown High School. Our kids are creative and they're smart and we got to get them out here giving us ideas because it was absolutely amazing to see like their sustainable city and all the projects that they did at the school. So that was, that was something else. Our Rec Commission met last week. Every year, we have a distinguished service award. 2017 distinguished service award will be going to Mid-City Transit for their constant involvement in our community, their constant donations of buses and funds to anything that goes on, from kid celebration to night out against crime, to city pride cleanup, to 10K. They're well-deserving of it. The Gold Award goes to an individual every year. And this year, the commission has decided the Gold Award should go to Sue Tapew, who is sitting here in the crowd, for her passion and fight against litter in the city. So Sue, congratulations. And we'll be given small presentations at our commission picnic in July and the folks here from the county council will be invited to that. Our pavilion at Maple Hill Park will be done Memorial Day weekend and ready for reservations. We have a lot of people that are already looking to book that. So that's going to be another revenue source and it's right close to the playground, so that is awesome. We have started to install a few baskets with the, the disc golf course that we're putting in the back of Davage. We want to, we are going to be leaving that, it's natural environment. You'll see that we'll be taking out some fallen trees and a few dead trees for safety reasons. But the natural environment is what we want the course to be. So it'll be something that'll still be used by our bird watchers and we're actually staying away from the back marsh area and that area, but it'll be backed by the pool. On that same note, I want to thank Jeff Schumart. He took the time and his, and also his expertise and made an incredible extensive map of Fancher Davage Park for us to use for a lot of things. The trails and everything that's there, from the pools, the horse rings, to the pavilions. He's an avid bird watcher there. So he's been mapping that and I found amazing too, he has found 123 different species of birds right in Davage Park. So I know a lot of bird watchers go there and I don't want them thinking we're going to be intruding on that area. We're going to leave it very natural. The shovel will be going in the ground on the skate park. The process is definitely moving forward on that. And once the remediation to the soil is done, I think you're going to see some fast building. So that's a great thing. Reminder to the public, our, our summer programs, our registration are going on, including the police academy. We do have a few more spots, but we're having three sessions this year covering from third grade to eighth grade, a very successful program. The police department does an excellent job with that. And again, thank Mount Carmel School for opening up their facility for us to run so many of our summer programs that we could not run in the school district due to construction. And lastly, I just want to thank our residents. They're so involved and they're helping us improve our city all the time. And the way they volunteer and their suggestions and their work is greatly appreciated. And with these folks with all their special talents, when we all come together, great things are happening and it's really nice to see. So thank you to our residents.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Corporation Council? Any questions for our lawyer? City Clerk?
Tonight, you'll be, has a resolution for closing the roads for the annual 10K Classic Road Race. I'll be putting that on the website, just making sure that the public knows about the closing of the streets for that very big race. Also, in June is going to be the other Route Dino Run, which will be closing streets too. So I have that all on the website, so for the public, please just make sure that you watch the closing of those streets. Also, we're into yard sale season now, so everybody who has a yard sale has to have a permit that we issue in our, in our department down in City Hall on the first floor, Room 12. And also, there are no signs on any telephone poles, which are, everybody knows, and we enforce that. And that's all I have for today.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. Public hearings and grievances?
Tonight, we have three public hearings. First one is public hearing for a proposed barber shop at 91 to 95 North Street during the bid moratorium. I'll read the notice. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 16th, on as near as 8 PM as possible, common council chambers, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the appeal of the bid moratorium for a proposed barber shop for 91 to 95 North Street, Section 31, Block 2, Lot 9. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed special use permit and site plan approval. Full plans are available at the office of the common council clerk, and this is by the order of the common council. This was published in the Times Herald Record on May 8th and on May 9th on the Times Herald Record and also on the city website.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now open?
Just for the record, you have your mailings?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, could you just hand them to Karen, please?
How you doing this evening?
Just give us a brief description of what you're planning on doing?
To open a barber shop on 93 North Street. It's going to be called Precision Barber Shop. Family-friendly, nice environment, nobody hanging outside, everything nice, very professional. I'm a professional person. And that's it, it's a barber shop.
Okay. Any questions from the public?
That's it. But, but, but nice, professional.
You're going to give senior discounts too, right?
I cut my own hair today.
Any member from the council? Alderman Friswah?
Seems to have a lot of other barbers in that area. You see what you're getting yourself into? You think you're going to strive?
No, I'm going to do good because I have clients. I've been doing it for 15 years, this. And you have to take risks. You have to jump, like Steve Harvey said. If you don't jump, how you going to know? I'm ready. I put money into this, everything.
We should look at your project.
I got my clientele and I'm going to do good. The place is going to look nice, presentable, professional. I think I'm going to do all right.
Good luck with that.
Work hard.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Sorry? Everybody, yeah, kids, adults, seniors, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Need a motion to close the public hearing? Alderman Massey, Second Amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed.
Okay, the second public hearing is for a proposed two-lot subdivision for Southgate at Middletown LLC. And I shall read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 16th, on as near 8 PM as possible, common council chambers, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision for Southgate at Middletown LLC on Yulick Road, Section 65, Block 1, Lot 1. And any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. for or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. This is by order of the Common Council. It was published in the Times-Child Record on May 8th and May 9th and also on the city website. Also, this falls under the General Municipal Law 239. It is within 500 feet of a municipal border, so this had to go to the Orange County Department of Planning. We received their comments. The department has received the above-referenced minor subdivision of an approved project parcel on Yulick Road to be divided into two separate lots in the C3 Zone. We have found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or countywide impacts would result from this approval.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now open?
Members of the council? My name is Gene Grillo.
You have your mailings, Gene?
Yeah, I have the mailings.
Thank you.
The applicant is my client, Southgate. Southgate had a site plan approved back in 2015 for a 302-unit apartment complex located on one tax lot. The purpose of their application tonight is to divide that into two tax lots. No additional improvements are going to be made. No impact to the environment or to traffic or things of that nature are going to be affected. It's being done almost exclusively, well, exclusively for financial purposes. It allows them to use each tax lot for individual or separate security for financing purposes. There are members of the, of Southgate here this evening, the engineer and the member of Southgate itself, to respond to any questions that you may have. And I believe you all have copies of the subdivision map, so you can, that indicates where the line is going to be located. The project was originally designed as a two-phase project, and the line is going to be separating the, dividing the one lot into two, is actually along the two-phase demarcation line. So there's no substantial change in that regard as well.
Okay. Any member from the public? Any member from the council? Alden Kleiner?
Just, I think this is pretty common practice.
It is, it is.
For financing purposes and-
It is, exactly.
Well-stated, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to close the public hearing? Alden Massey, second by Alden McCasone, all in favor? Hearing is now closed.
The third public hearing is for a proposed two-lot subdivision for 9 East Avenue and 9 East Avenue rear. I'll read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 16th, on or as near 8:00 p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision for 9 East Avenue and 9 East Avenue rear for Joseph Gichara, Section 35, Block 7, Lot 38 dot 1 and 38 dot 2. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. This is by the order of the Common Council. It was published in the Times-Child Record on May 8th and on May 9th and also on the city website.
At this time, the public hearing is now open?
For the record, you have your mailings? Hand those to Karen, please.
Yep, okay. My name is Dan Yanis. I'm the surveyor for Mr. Chara. He owns two tax map parcels on East Avenue. 9 East Avenue is Lot 38.1, has a two-story house on it. In the back is East Avenue to the rear, has a two-story garage, two separate tax map parcels, owned by him for many years. We want to combine those into one tax map parcel, eliminate the lot line between them. Now it will be .21 acres. This is to help to accommodate a sewer issue that's involved in the lot itself, working with the city to take care of that sewer problem and make this an easier one lot instead of two. That's all we're doing. No new buildings, no nothing on the site at all.
Any member from the public would like to speak? Anyone on the council? Alden Kleiner?
I just have one question on, do we have anything to do with, or is it the Planning Board that as far as waiving commercial on the first floor, that this is completely separate from that issue?
That's Richard.
There's no action needed. These are existing uses. They're going to continue.
Continual use.
No Planning Board approval required.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
All move.
Massey, second by Alden McCasone, all in favor?
Aye.
Mark, City Mayor?
Let me get to thank you. First, I'd like to thank Census for the presentation. It was brief and right to the point and addressed some of the concerns that people have expressed to me and to my office. And I think if there's any follow-up that's necessary, we certainly can put those links. I think, John, they said they have some links to certain things for Census that you could put on the website-
Yes, of course.
-in regards to the meters. Saturday night, we attended the fire dinner, myself, Council President Rodriguez and his wife Wendy, Alden Massey, Alden Kleiner's wife Barbara, and Alden Witt and his wife Crutchin. And this was Sam Barone, Chief Barone's last fire dinner as chief, and, you know, he did serve us for two rounds, coming back when we had a little bit of a mini crisis within the fire department. And so we expressed our thanks to Chief Barone for all his years of volunteering and for the city and for his very efficient operation of the Middletown Fire Department, and he will be missed. So the dinner honored many people, Chief Winter, who was, I believe, he's still here, I know. He received some type of honors that night, and it was nice to see many of the former chiefs in the building also. Also, we wanted to acknowledge, last Sunday, the Economic Development Director Maria Bruni, myself, and John Degnan, we were invited, and I'm going to mess up the name here, by former Alderman Ashok Sabnis and Dr. Sumuro, something along those lines. I apologize for butchering your name. And to the Bara Atiya Mandir Temple. Is that pretty good?
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, all right, Mandir. And they did present us with a book celebrating their 19th anniversary. They're located just outside the City of Middletown, and they wanted us to share with the members of the council, who would like to see a little bit about what they've been doing out there. It was a great ceremony for the part that we were able to stay for, and very much appreciated the invitation and the opportunity to attend. The capital budget is one issue that we've been working on for many, many years, and the council president likes to get a little nasty about it, because we haven't done one in a few years, quite a few years. But it is time. We have done some short-term borrowings through our fund balance, but we did finally tonight at 6:45 meeting of the Board of Estimant adopt the capital budget. Many of the members of the council were there, and it's a three-year plan for covering 17, 18, and 19, the total borrowing, so people can understand where their taxpayer dollars go. We have about $600,000 in debt coming off in the next couple of years, and you really want to time your newer investments when debt comes off also, so you can really not change the, increase dramatically at all, your annual payments for debt. But in this year's capital budget, we had to make some big decisions. From smaller items and not necessarily emergency items, like the resurfacing of the Maple Hill Pool, which is $80,000, to some small pickup trucks that we had to purchase, and some minor equipment purchases. But the biggest piece was the improvements in the Public Works Department. The dump trucks that you see that plow your snow and pick up the bulk pickup and that you see around town. We have to purchase four vehicles this year at a cost of $225,000 each. So that's $900,000 alone just for those four vehicles. And they are replacing four vehicles that go back to 1985, 1987, 1991, and 1992. So we certainly did get our money's worth out of that. We have a fleet of about nine or 10 vehicles. So this should get us through for the next, hopefully, five to seven years with, in regards to the purchase of any new large vehicles like that. We're also spending $215,000 on a new front-end loader for the sanitation department and also for the DPW Street Department. And for this year, the borrowing will be about $1.868 million. That'll be tied into the courthouse borrowing, which is $3.3 million, of which $2.7 million is being reimbursed. The skateboard project, which Superintendent Brinkerhoff mentioned, will be underway, hopefully, by next Monday. Some test pits are being dug tomorrow. That's $500,000. Ian Jacob mentioned the city portion of the sidewalk grant that Mr. Tobin inquired about, which is about $400,000. So that's a, the sidewalk grant is about a total of about 2.7. Some of that money will be dedicated to the commercial area of Dulson Avenue. Other will be around Grove Street, around Thrall Park, Wickham Avenue, from the ONW Station down, right to Park Circle area, and hopefully, part of Railroad Avenue by the new short-line terminal or across the street by the Middletown Lanes. So we're making some significant capital investments, and we did work very hard on it. If you have any questions about it, you can ask Don Paris for any follow-up, but I believe it is being presented tonight. There is a resolution tonight, so we're here, I'm here to address any specific questions you may have regarding that. The, oh, there's also $150,000 in there for replacement of park equipment, less than what the superintendent had requested, but also, hopefully, and I spoke with Assemblywoman Guthrie today, will be matched with $150,000 grant through her office. So we'll get at least most of the way there for the playground equipment, if she's able to come through on that. In regards to Maple Hill, Chris had mentioned it, there's also, I received an email from alderwoman Ram Cassune and Alderman Johnson, and had a discussion with the Parks and Rec Department regarding the additional parking that may be necessary up there, and we would like some input from the neighbors that are, the immediate neighbors. And the area of the old basketball court is where they're talking about. It's level. They're looking to possibly pave it in order to provide some parking for the new pavilion. There is somewhat of a shortage of parking, so if you're in the third ward or if you live up by Maple Hill Park, please call your alderwoman and alderman and give them some input on that before we make a decision as we move forward. The noise are the cafe permit. As you know, I had my concerns, and as you saw on the paper, which I was quoted on, I was hoping I wasn't quoted on, because my wife calls me a hard head sometimes, but I don't agree with the whole thing. You know I don't. I'm going to go along with your wishes on it. I had my concerns. I requested the sunset clause be put in, out of my concerns, but I still have my concerns, but it's going to move forward. Unfortunately, the Police Department does not have the equipment in hand yet. So I didn't catch the whole discussion, but they have to understand, they cannot start, or I won't sign the resolution until the Police Department has the noise meters. So if you could contact, and maybe they're watching, the individual owners, the chief advised me that he will try to order them and get them in ASAP, hopefully, you know, within a few days. But if not, I can't sign the ordinance if there's no enforcement portion or no equipment to sign it. So he's going to try to get them in as soon as possible, and by doing so, we then can notify the property owners that their permits, and I believe, John, you mentioned that a couple of them don't have their permits in order yet anyway. So make sure when they do come in that they're advised that the ordinance is not signed until the Police Department has the noise monitoring equipment. An update on the trail, which you'll be, you'll be voting on tonight, the acceptance of the $20,000 from Homeland Security through Orange County, and that's an all-terrain vehicle that's part of our trail security plan that the Bureau Commander, Lieutenant Awachu, is putting together, and will be presenting to the Police Commission hopefully by next month. And this is a vehicle that's going to go and work in conjunction with that, and that is purchased under a grant. I met today with Elizabeth Alhar from the Middletown Trail Advocates to give her an upgrade, an update, not an upgrade, on the trail where, as you know, the trees have been cleared to East Main Street. Myself, Alden Massey, and others, and Jacob, and Maria Bruni, we had a meeting with Floricam and the switch-in because of the, some potential problems with the trail location, and it's nothing life-shattering, just movements a little bit here and there, but, so I think everything is ready to go as far as getting to East Main Street. There's more work that needs to be done to get from East Main through the second West Main Street portion, which would be up on, by Cumberland Farms and off of the second part of West Main Street. Let's see. The gentleman was here speaking regarding CPV. And, you know, this project goes back about 15 years to the old Calpine Project. And I need to stress to Middletown residents, this is not a City of Middletown project. This is a project that's located out on Route 6. The portion that you see on Route 17M is just the connection from the underground wiring to the, to the power lines, and that's controlled by the New York Power Authority. And we are, and what we think, part of making the project more environmentally friendly. We are selling them the treated sewage water, also known as gray water, for cooling, and we are going to reap a benefit of about $500,000 to $600,000 a year by the sale of this property, of this gray water. We are not involved in the approval process. That's the Town of Wayweyanda and the New York State DEC and the EPA, but we are not part of that regulatory process. So I know that there's, people are starting to really organize now, but when we were going through whether, the debate on whether to provide them with the gray water, we didn't have one person attend our meeting, not one, to voice a concern regarding that until after the fact. So not that we may have changed our minds, or maybe some people would have, maybe some wouldn't have, but I don't recall, and maybe when I say not one person came, I don't recall one person coming to a meeting prior to those votes. We have a contract with CPV to provide that service. The work has been done. The plant is almost open, and hopefully, the EPA, the DEC, and all the regulatory agencies will do their jobs on this factory or on this plant, just like they would do with any other factory, whether located in the City of Middletown or in the Town of Warwick or any of the surrounding towns, you know? Every community around here has industry, and the impact on the environment is something that's, should concern all of us, and I think one gentleman mentioned about the EPA cuts. Of course, it's going to concern all of us. But we are a small city that can't fight the world on behalf of everybody, every other township. It's the responsibility of people in those townships to rise up, run for office in their communities, and represent their own, very own communities. And we, I think we did the right thing from Middletown's perspective in providing an environmentally sound solution to the cooling process while at the same time cutting a deal that will generate in excess of a half a million dollars a year for Middletown taxpayers. And before I go, I believe that may be all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the mayor? Alden Kleiner?
Mayor, I just, we have the one resolution on CPV. Would you just explain that we've long ago approved that agreement with them, that this is just a technicality for remediation?
This is for the Dulson Avenue, Jacob?
Yes.
Restriction on the landfill material going to the sewer line, though?
Inside the sewer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is, this is inside our sewage treatment plant, where the sewage line is already connected into, and there's a deed restriction being placed on it. So this is worked, this is basically after the fact. The sewer line is there already.
I just wanted to make-
It's a basic formality. It's not a, it's not a contract with us and CPV.
Right.
It's, they found some material in there that wasn't really supposed to be there when they were doing the digging.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, but it's not the big CPV agreement, I think.
Right, that's long ago.
That's the point you're trying to make, yes. True.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alden McCasone?
Just to, for the purpose of clarification on CPV, I think just for the public's case, that we never really functioned as a gatekeeper for this project. There's been a lot of feedback that somehow if we had said no to water, this wouldn't have gone forward. They were going to find, they were going to take care of that one way or another. And I just, just to clarify that.
They were using groundwater, and that was the- They were using groundwater, and that was the, so we had an opportunity to provide them treated sewage, which protects the groundwater and at the same time generates a revenue source for the city. So the project wasn't dying because Middletown didn't provide them with treated sewage.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Can I respond?
Nope. No, this is enough public, remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Thank you. I just have a couple of things quick, and they're all positive, which is always nice. Yeah, I would like to thank Melanie Lang and Lorraine Booth for the Blue Star Memorial Byway Marker dedication that was held Saturday, May 6th at Thrall Park. It's a tribute to all armed forces of America. As a veteran of four years in the United States Air Force, I was honored to be part of this dedication. Two, the mayor brought up the fire dinner and Chief Sam Barone, and I want to thank Sam and all the members of the Fire Department. It was a good time, the dinner, and thank you, Sam, for all that you've done for Middletown and the Fire Department. And finally, quickly, I want to thank DPW employees for the bolt pickup. You did a great job, and they did the first ward, and I certainly appreciate, and I'd like you to tell your members, Jacob, thank you.
Burr?
I'd like, Jacob, also thank you for all, your great job, even with all the TVs. I see now some of them have, put them back in, but I think we picked up a few anyway, but I hate to say that. And then I thank Sammy for all the service, and I couldn't make the dinner, I had a family issue, and I'd like to thank and congratulate all the people that won awards. Thank you in my final, too. 90 years, and he won Fireman of the Year for the Fire Police. Thank you.
Alderman Cassoon?
Congrats, Tom. I'd like to start by just recapping that we had a Neighborhood Watch meeting last Tuesday. It was well-attended, which is really nice to see. We had a few issues raised that were very rapidly addressed. I was happy about that, those related to DPW, so thank you again to you. We are having our next meeting in June, that would be June the 13th. We'll be having the mayor there, so it's like a guest star. We expect a lot of people to come out. I encourage everyone to do so, especially in light of it leads right into the Safe Summer Initiative, so it's a great time to come out and get that conversation started. I want to wish all the moms out there Happy Mother's Day, by the way. This past weekend, I was busy moming it at a swim meet, and that is also why I was unable to attend the fire dinner, which I do like to attend, so I'm sorry I missed it, and my thanks to Chief Barone, and my thanks to frankly all the volunteers and our paid firemen for the service they give to our city. It does not go unnoticed by a lot of us, and we really appreciate your time, your sacrifice. It's a great thing, so I'm glad you had an opportunity to celebrate it. I'm just sorry I couldn't share that time with you. DPW, you guys are awesome. The cleanup has been flawless as usual, but also it's cutting crew time, and I've seen a lot of properties that have had high grass, and you guys have gone out and gotten them cut, and especially in light of Dr. Johnson's tick warning for the year, that we're looking at a particularly bad season. I think high grass presents also a public health issue, so the fact that these guys are staying on top of it is helpful to all of us, and I appreciate the residents who report it to me, and I hope that you'll continue to do so, report it to your aldermen. We can pass it on DPW and make sure that we keep the city in a good situation, so I thank you for that. What am I missing? Anything? Live music, just want to quickly speak on that. I think if anyone was giving this a pretty hairy eyeball, it was, it was myself. I was very, very hesitant, very nervous about it. I feel like this is a very low-risk trial. It's an opportunity to say we're definitely giving this a shot. I think we have a balancing act here in the council between our responsibility to our constituents and our responsibility to economic development in the city, so I think this makes a good compromise there. It's very low risk. Anything goes wrong, it ends this year. So my assurances to those who are gun-shy, especially in the third ward, I know you've been once bitten, so report concerns to us as they happen this year, as this goes forward. I feel like it's going to pass, so I'm just going to go ahead and say that. I do hope everyone went out and voted on the school budget, it's too late to do it now, but it is important. That was today, the school board and the school budget vote. Kids' education matters, so I hope everyone did. I warned everybody on Facebook all day about it. As for CPV, yes, a lot of what I'm reading is troubling, but since the beginning, our role here, at least in Middletown, has never really been a deal killer or a deal maker. We weren't a facilitator of this project. If anything, as the mayor said, I feel we were a facilitator for the environment. They were getting their water either way, so that's, on the city council side of that, I'm there. As a mom of four, you know, I have my own concerns, but those are separate from this focus, so I'm going to leave it at that. I'm sorry I went on and on tonight. Thank you to everyone.
Alderman Johnson?
Well, the tick thing got worse since two weeks ago, so pay attention to the ticks, if you would. I also was not able to attend the dinner. Thank you, Sammy, for all that you do, and thank you for all the gentlemen and ladies who keep our city safe with respect to that. CPV clarifications are appreciated. It's a high-profile project. It has many moving parts. We are one of those moving parts, but I think the mayor has clarified what our part was. The music conversation, I did speak with the mayor briefly, privately, and I did take all of his observations to heart. We're going to move forward. Mayor, you weren't here for the hearing. I called them baby steps. Hopefully you won't trip before we learn to walk. And then, of course, as we're doing this, the chief makes the point that you have to have decibel meters that are certifiable in a court of law, so that's a whole other aspect of this law coming into effect. I likened it on the break to like a breathalyzer, so if you can't prove that you broke the law, you really can't enforce the law. So that's going to be another immediate glitch in the law. We didn't even vote on it yet, and already we have a clarification. And as far as the skate park, congratulations to the department, it's a real in particular. You're bringing the project home. It'll be a great piece of, a point of interest for our downtown revitalization, and I'm looking forward to it, although I will not be on a skateboard. Thank you very much.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. I would just like to repeat the congratulations to those honored at the firefighters dinner on Saturday. That's a good time. My wife and I enjoy that. My, both grandparents, my father and uncle are in the, were in the firefighters in Middletown, and it's, it's awesome to see that much history still in one room. Chief Lama Scola, I believe he's in his 90s, who came up and made a presentation, and I delivered his newspaper, so it was good to always see him, so thank you very much.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. We're voting tonight on closing the streets for the Classic 10K, so I just want to remind everyone that's Sunday, June 4th, and there are also events on Saturday, June 3rd, but I thank the police department, they did a great job last year in opening the streets after the race was over, so there are fan zones, you know, try and find out, but get out and support the runners. It's really a good thing for them, and it's still a great event for Middletown. I want to also thank Alderman Massey, for, I know he played a big part in the Blue Star Memorial, in having it located in Thrall Park, and it's a beautiful-looking memorial, so unfortunately it shows we need to clean up the rest of them, but it really looks terrific. Thank you. And thanks to the Fire Department. I would like to, and I don't have his name, I apologize, so I will, next meeting, recognize the firefighter of the year. I always think that's an amazing award, and that the person should get some recognition for it. I congratulate the people involved in getting a conviction for the Justin Spites murder. If there's anything that came out of that besides from the hard work for the, because people would not get involved and would not speak up and would not say what happened, they made it so much harder, but, so I congratulate everybody who worked so hard, and it did help to be an impetus for our social host law, which I think will help prevent these things in the future, so, once again, a little good maybe out of something, a real tragedy. And finally, starting tonight at midnight through Wednesday at 11:59 PM is Hudson Valley Gives. It's sponsored by the Community Foundation of Orange and Sullivan County. It's a way to give to your charities. You can actually get prizes and compete for stuff, but it's a, it's a countywide and maybe statewide opportunity to give to your, your favorite charities. I know, and it's called HV Gives, Hudson Valley Gives, but HVgives.org, and you can log on starting at midnight tonight and all through tomorrow. I know one of the charities on there is the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council, and the money would all go towards supporting the warming station, so if you're able to do that, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. John Francois?
Good evening. Thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone that came out to the fourth constituents' meeting. It's always a great dialogue when we have our constituents, and we sit down with our constituents and kind of express their concerns and also their input into the fourth ward. And again, I appreciate everyone that shows up in our meeting. Also, the common council president was also involved. I think he was just checking up on us, but that's okay. And our next meeting will be announced on a later date, and kudo to DPW, the commissioner. It always seems to get anxiety around this time of the year. It's like when I leave in the morning, you have all this stuff on the side of the road. It looks to me like everybody's leaving Middletown. And by the time I get home, it's like everything is gone, and everybody's still there. I mean, it's oppressive. Thank you.
Sid?
Hello, ooh, all right. Hello, good evening. First things first, I just want to thank the police department for everything that you guys do. Honestly, I do feel safer as a whole, as a community, simply because I know I can go down the street, say hello, and you guys will respond back. Special shout-out to the Fire Department. I wasn't able to attend either, but congratulations. I know that it takes time to actually volunteer and dedicate yourself to that, so kudos to them. Also, I'm excited for the skate park, simply because I grew up during a generation where my friends used to skateboard, and we used to get in trouble because of fines, and we couldn't be on school property, but now that we have that opportunity, we'll be staying more out of trouble. Also, I want to invite everybody. I don't know if you guys heard, it's Thursday night, family dinner, so Middletown Cares Coalition, they're focusing on preventing young teens from drugs and all that stuff, so what better way than to actually become involved in your children's life? Like, one dinner a night can actually help, just to communicate with your children. So this is free, and everybody's more than welcome to come, bring your child. It's on the 25th, and it's at 7:00. Oh, wait, 23rd, I'm so sorry. And it's going to be in the Recreation Office at 47 Academy Avenue. Thank you.
New business?
A resolution tonight sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $6,505 from the general fund balance to cover the cost of an insulated canine kennel for the temporary housing of dogs.
Sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the County of Orange for an acquisition of one utility terrain vehicle and one trailer with a maximum expenditure of $20,000.
Sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer $4,500 from their revenue to contractual services to pay for a tree removal, which will be reimbursed to the city.
Sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
Did we, Commissioner, can you, because we didn't discuss this at all. I didn't know what the tree removal was about.
It was, it was an emergency. It was at the end of Friday, Friday evening, a tree service contractor comes in, and he tells the property owners on Prospect Avenue that you better get out of the house because the tree, it's a huge tree, it's going to fall down and crush you. And he walks away, so, you know, that alarmed us, and alarmed the mayor and the police, and the police went down there, and, and we looked at it, and it was seriously a dangerous tree, so we ended up evicting both houses on either side of it, arranging for a contractor to come and take it down. We got in touch with the owner of the property, he was in California, the guy who owns the property. We told him we're going to have to do it, you don't have a choice, and, and that's it. And then the next day, the families went back to their homes, and it was the least amount of disruption, but it was a major, major problem. We had to jump in and take care of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to close all roads for the 37th Annual Classic 10K Road Race.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign an affluent water supply and process water discharge service agreement with CPV.
Respected by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize the Commissioner of Public Works to dispense of city-generated compost material and millings to city residents.
Sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to approve the proposed barber shop for 91 to 95 North Street during the bid moratorium.
Sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Sid to declare the common council lead agency and approve SECR for this two-lot subdivision for South Gate at Middletown LLC.
Respected by Alderman Sid, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to approve the two-lot subdivision for South Gate at Middletown LLC.
Sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kassum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Sid to approve the two-lot subdivision for 9 East Avenue and 9 East Avenue Rear.
Sponsored by Alderman Sid, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kassum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to allow live music and live music performances in outdoor cafes only during a trial period lasting only until October 15, 2017.
Sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Massey.
I'm hoping, look, everyone has to vote their conscience and I apologize to anyone that I may have been a little impassioned by. I believe this thing. I'd like to give it a shot. I think it'll work. I hope I never have to eat my words, but I truly do believe it'll work. Chief, if you need anything with the meters, I have the ones that were used up in, not the physical meter, the ones that Saratoga used and their chief recommended them. So I'd be happy to speak to you if this should pass. But like I say, vote your conscience, vote the way you feel, and I did not mean to say what I said.
Anyone else? Rock and roll.
Graham Kassum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
No.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
No.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Massey?
All right, I have a resolution here. Resolution, let me say sponsored by, sponsored by Alderman Massey, resolved that the common council of the city of Middletown concurs with the board of estimate and apportionment to approve the 2017, 2019 capital budget plan attached to this resolution.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kassum. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kassum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be ordered and the claims be adjusted and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Roll.
Graham Kassum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
For German?